I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. The Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community and charged with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open-meeting law but are not open forums for the community. That being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. If we have any visitors tonight, we can go over the guidelines a little bit more closely when that time comes. Carla, could you please do roll call for us?
Alexis Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Benjamin?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Junker Davis?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mr. Stubble?
Here.
Mrs. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Zebra?
Thank you, Carla. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations tonight, and I'd like to start off with the PTO, Ian Company. Thanks, Buck, and friends.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us a few minutes of your time today. I'm Tia Buck. This is Jessica Gaines. She's one of our newest members. She's doing a lot of behind-the-scenes things for us this year. She works as a house moister for snacks and even for backpacks, and we'll get into that in a few minutes. She's doing a lot of sponsorship stuff for us as well for the Wizards that we'll touch on too, so welcome her. We may be only into the first two weeks of school, but we've already been really busy. This year, we're off to a great start with fundraising, thanks to the Labor Day's lemonade stand that Megan Williams and her family so graciously let us take over. We were able to raise funds for our organization as well as donate $1,000 to Ellis's Lemonade Stand Foundation in honor of Brady. She was presenting with that today. As some of you may know, there are exciting things on the horizon for the music department at OA. Upon hearing this, we decided to help out the music goasters with their pizza sales at Labor Days this year. Despite some of the uncooperative weather, the sales were a huge success, and we'd like to present them with a check today for $1,000. So, thank you for all you do. We'd also like to present the math department today with the donations. Well, we've got calculators here. At the end of the school year, we were given a heads-up that scientific calculators were on a deep discount through Amazon, so we purchased eleven of them for middle school. Maybe they can be passed on to students that need them.
I'd like to pass on them. Mrs. Newer is down there. Several in the psych game, but she desperately wanted to come up, so I hurried up.
Thank you.
Our last donation this evening is the Lego Robotics Department. Unfortunately, Coach Kimare could not come here tonight. However, we have some of the members present to accept the donation. At the club competitions, every school that participates typically hands out the trade buttons. Depending on the numbers of schools and students enrolled in the competitions, the buttons can become very pricey. We were able to help the team out with the purchase of a button maker. It would save the team funds in the long run and give the students an opportunity to design and create their own buttons. The button maker we purchased will enable the Lego club to create three different button sizes, and we came with 300 buttons and accessories to start them out. Have fun and good luck for them. Some other tidbits. Our group collaborated with the Genesee County Youth Bureau to collect backpacks and school supplies for fifty students this summer. This turned out to be a successful campaign, and we were able to also collect a surplus of stock that we used to supply the closets for both schools. We initiated the Amazon wishlist campaign, asking for community support to help stock our snack closets at both the schools, and we received an overwhelming response for that. Next Thursday, our group will be hosting a concession stand at the Powder Pop game as well.
And on Wednesday, October 30th, we will be hosting the much-anticipated Harlem Wizards versus OA Hornets. Faculty and community members, so sign up. You know Wendy Bergman is trying to catch some faculty and play, so we'd love to have you on the team, anybody that wants to. Each school will be able to also participate in an assembly during the day. The Wizards will do a little presentation and give them a little taste of what they would see at night for the nighttime ticketed event. The game will begin at 6:30. And finally, we're looking into hosting a holiday Christmas shop for the kids. So, we're ironing out some details with that, like the Merry Moose and Mister Secret Santa shop. So, we're working on that right now, and we'll let you know when we iron out those details. And we thank you again for the opportunity to present this evening.
Tina, is there, just before you sit down?
Yeah.
Membership. How can parents get involved in the PTO? So, when typically are your meetings? How do we know?
Typically, the first Thursday of every month, we try to keep that, unless there's like a huge major school event or a holiday, then we'll move it. Carla is great about hosting on the school's Parents' Square Facebook page. We have a Facebook page. You can reach out to us through that. You can reach out to me through Parents' Square, email.
Just recently, we did, and we had a table at the preschool first day, hoping to get some sign-ups. I don't know how we did, but we're trying to get them as young as we can to get them so that we can have a long way through high school.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to incorporate events at both buildings now. When PTO first started, a lot of it was just geared toward elementary. So, we're trying to just do more through both campuses now and just row our group and do as much as we can, and we don't like to say no. So, we try to do as much as we can with fundraising and helping out where we can. People need us. Let us know, and we'll do what we can to help, so.
Super impressive, the amount of donations here and how you've kind of spread it out from the elementary to the high school is like... It's not like it's fantastic, so thank you so much.
Yes, thank you so much. Very much appreciated, my own.
And Tina, thank you for your time. I know, I probably only know half of the time that you actually put into it, and I know it's a lot.
It is. It's worth it, though, because, you know, we're seeing a lot of positive things, and I'd like to be involved and help where we can, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up is Mrs. Schleggenoff and Link Crew.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Schleggenoff, and I am one of the advisors of Link Crew. Pete Beuler is the other one, but he is in the middle of a cross-country meet right now, so I wish you a burning, but I'm here for a very short minute, and then I'm back out there. So, these are just a portion of our Link Crew leaders, so if you guys would just like to introduce yourselves.
I'm Olivia Roth. I'm a senior here, and I'm one of the Link Crew leaders.
I'm Olivia Wester. I'm also a senior.
I'm Kelly Collins-O'Neal. I'm also a senior.
I'm Drew Ariz Diaz, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Alexis Smith. I'm also a senior.
And I'm Emily Spelman, and I'm a junior.
So, just to tell you a little bit about our program, we've actually been a part of the school district for eight years now, and we really started off small, and we have really grown into a great mentoring program that I think really benefits our freshman class. We're a transition program where our Link leaders will mentor a group of freshmen with a partner for the entire school year. So, it's a national organization from the Boomerang Project, and it is made up of 11th and 12th graders. And one of the things that's unique about the Link Crew system here is that usually Link Crew is like at really big schools. And I think what makes us unique is that we are a small district, so we can have a much more intimate relationship with our freshmen and do a lot more things with them, which I think leads to a much more healthier, successful year for them. So, obviously, our goal is just to address... We want them to feel safe. We want them to be informed, because we would like them to get involved, and we want them to feel connected. Because all the data out there will show you that the more connected kids are with the school and with their peer group, they're less likely to have attendance issues or drop out and things like that. So, that's one of the reasons why Peter and I decided that we wanted to create the program. So, it's a pretty strict process. We don't just let anybody into Link Crew. We are looking for a broad group of people, but we have a pretty strict selection process. We start off with asking for teacher recommendations, but anybody can apply. But anybody that does get recommended will automatically be invited to like a meeting where we give out our information. This past year, we actually had twenty-six applicants, which is our largest group that we've ever had. And we have... So, we have sixteen. And it varies year to year depending on the size of the class, because we like to keep the group small and so that relationship can make more of a connection with the students. And then, after the application process, Peter and I sit down, we interview each one of the candidates, pretty thorough questions, and then we vet through that program. And once we make our decisions on who we would like to select, then we actually have a meeting with anybody that wasn't selected, so we can give them feedback and areas of improvement, whether it's, you know, behaviors we've seen in school or attendance issues that they might have in school, or just the interview process itself, because we were hoping that they reapply, they show some growth the following year. And then, we pair everybody up with a partner, and then they attend mandatory trainings. So, these kids give up a lot of time in the summer. They give up two days of trainings from eight till noon in late August, and then they give up an entire morning for freshman orientation, where they're here at quarter to eight in the morning, and they're not leaving here until noon. So, it is... It's very intense. It's a program through the Boomerang Project, and we're looking for a cross-section. So, we're not just looking for the, you know, the super-high achievers or just the athletes, because we're looking for a broad spectrum of people that will be able to connect with all of our freshmen, because there's all different kinds of kids. So, that's our goal. So, the things that they do... Does anybody want to talk about this? You guys? Okay, go ahead.
So, we take our kids to a bunch of events. So, like, I have a group of seven kids this year. We did a kickball game with all of the groups together last week, which was a lot of fun, and our kids really liked it. It gives the kids a chance to have like a break-in break almost, and they can connect with us. Last year, I took my kids bowling. We handed out donuts last week for getting through the first week of school, just a bunch of stuff like that. And then, I also play sports with some of them, so like, it's really nice. I get like an inside connection with some of them.
And then, we have our, what we kind of call them our red flag kids, that are freshmen that we are worried about. So, anybody that has a certain grade point average in a specific class will do academic follow-ups, where these guys will sit in a room, and they run the meetings. They'll talk about, you know, why aren't they doing their homework? Why aren't they coming to school? Why, you know, what's going on? And try to help them navigate them to set them up to be more successful throughout the school year. And we usually do that twice, once in the first semester and once in the second semester, if it's needed. Some kids don't need it, but some kids do. And then, like Aleah had mentioned, we do a lot of social follow-ups. Our kids can earn leadership cords throughout the school year, and they have to do a certain amount of events. And events are what they invite everybody to. A connection could be a one-on-one thing, like a birthday celebration, a card, helping them, support them in office hours for academic support. It could be anything like that, just to create that positive school climate and to make those connections with the students. And then, our leaders, I think all of you have group chats with your freshmen, where they invite them, they do check-ins with them. So, there's a lot of things that they do throughout the course of the school year. And the way that we kind of approach it is that we're going to hold your hand tight in the beginning of the school year, and then by May, we're kind of going to let you go, because we've got to get ready for the following year really fast. But other than that, that's kind of like, you know, like letting them go a little bit, so hopefully they have adjusted to school pretty easily. And then, these are just some of the things, and maybe you guys want to talk about these.
So, this was like the one that Aleah had mentioned earlier, that we did have like a kickball thing, where I think we're going to start doing like a kickball year for like the freshmen to get all the freshmen together, so we can know each other a bit more and have some fun. So, that was a picture of the kickball that we had, and these pictures were from Thanksgiving.
Yes, Thanksgiving.
And that's where basically we have like any event that's already planned out, so that's already one that's given to us throughout the whole, throughout the school year.
We feed them pie for Thanksgiving.
Apple pie, pumpkin pie. And we just have fun with them. We make turkeys, and we have like, we like cut out some feathers, and they can write little thank yous to whoever they would want to, to their parents, or, you know, their friends, or whoever they want to thank them. We also have our Links, our Link Olympics, where it's an event. That's like, I think, our most fun event, where we have all the groups come, and we play different types of games with them to get, you know, make a bigger connection with them. And I think that one was also like a...
Yeah. This will be played jeopardy. Okay. So, on a final note, they're going to speak on like why they wanted to be a Link leader and what it's done for them and for the kids. But I think that...
There isn't a slide about like the Link leaders? Oh, there it is.
But one of the things that we do, I wouldn't call it an incentive program, but more like a reward program. So, Peter and I developed a program that if the kids do five events throughout the course of the school year, and then they make connections once a month, then they can get their leadership cords. And they're different colors, because a lot of these kids are first years, but some of them decided to come back for a second year, and then they can get a second set of cords, that they wear graduation. So, some swag that they like to bring home, so. But if you guys just want to talk about like why you chose to be a Link leader and then just like, you know, what you've gotten out of it, for you personally?
Okay, I wanted to be a Link leader because I like making impacts on kids. And last year, it was like nice to hear their feedback at the end of the year. They told me I was a good Link leader and that they had fun, and you know, that's always good to hear. And my kids were all very academic and smart, so I didn't have any problems.
I chose to be a Link leader because I know how stressful and scary it can be coming into high school and kind of being almost like the babies and not having many friends and trying to connect with people. So, I just kind of wanted to help them get out of their comfort zone and like know that they have someone to look at and look up to and help them with anything that they have.
I chose to be a Link leader because freshman year, it really is rough. It's, there's a lot of new things. Everything is really changing. When you look at middle school, it's not the same at all, so when I got my Links, I was super excited. I got such good things. They're all girls, and they're all really easy. So, I loved that.
Well, this is my second year doing Link Crew. My first year, I was a bit like nervous. I was like, oh, my God, like how my... You know, every student is different to deal with. Everybody has different types of personalities, you know? Some people like to be shy, some people are really extroverts, you know? And dealing with different types of students, it can be really difficult. But knowing how to manage them is something that's really important as being a Link leader, is knowing how to manage, how to treat some people differently. Some people like to be really shy. You know, some don't really want to talk in front of other people, like they want to be one-on-one, have these like other types of conversations. And for me, coming into like the freshman year was really difficult for me, especially me. I evolved, you know, in different schedules, you're not with the same friends that you were with in your middle school, and you know, you have different friends that you have, and you know, some of them are not your friends anymore. They, you know, they grow up, and they, I don't know, they find new friends, and it's definitely a lot, it's difficult. So, I thought being a Link leader was, you know, I was like, well, I'm going to give them the best year they could ever have coming into freshman year. And I think doing this was the best option I could ever think of. Last year, I had an amazing group. I had some students that were struggling academically, and I would always talk to them, you know? One of them may actually go on the bus with them, and I would talk to them like, hey, like, keep on going, like, it's your freshman year. You have to, you know, you have to like not give up. You know, it's going to start getting to you, the homeworks and everything. And so, I would like have meetings with him, and I would be like, hey, if you do this, I'll give you this, and like always giving him prizes, and like, you know, always saying like, hey, like, if you do that. And I would always have like, hey, like, what would you like? And he was, and that person was like, oh, I really want pizza for my family. So, it's like, okay, well, if you have this grade for the rest of quarter, I'll get you it. And he kept that grade. So, I mean, always having like that limit with him, like, hey, like, if you do this, you're going to get compensated with this. Well, I really want the pizza, so I got it straight away. So, I think it's also being like, having to know like what's going to help them out throughout the whole school year, and not only them knowing, like seeing us as Link leaders, but also a friend that they can count with and talk to whenever they want to. So, that's also something that I really wanted to do.
I want to add too. I'd say it's a lot of adapting, and having that person there that keeps everything sane is really crucial. I know two of my Links, I see them every single day. There's some of my Links that don't talk, not even like just to me and I mean, they just don't talk at all. And that's really difficult, because I'll go hang out with these two after school every single day for forty-five minutes before we all have our practices, and we're just chatting away, and then I don't even ever get to talk to these Links. So, that's the hardest part of it all, is really just trying to figure out everybody's different levels.
Well, this is also my second year. I do want to agree with her, though, because there's a couple of my Links personally who I sit with at lunch, and I hang out, talk to them, while the other ones are kind of everywhere, and I didn't connect with them that orientation day, because they weren't there. But to go on to next point, freshman year, when you first start, is really hard, especially you're losing these friend groups, you're gaining friend groups. Me personally, I came from Utah my freshman year, so I knew like three people, so I understand how hard it is to kind of transition from there. Last year, I had a lot of more problem cases. I love them all, but they're a lot, and there is some who are struggling academically and some struggling with friends, and just the socialization part was hard for a lot of them. So, I made some really close personal connections with a few of them, and I felt like I could have done a lot more. Like, I did as much as I can, obviously, but I was like, I want to do more. So, I did it this year too, to see like how much more can I actually put into this? How much more can I get out of it as well? So, my kids this year, they're pretty good. There's definitely like the different dynamics. So, some of them are already like best friends, like they make fun of each other and be like friends or whatever. Then I have other ones who they don't want to talk to people. I try to be friendly, and they're kind of like, okay, thanks. So, I'm like, okay, let's try and get through this. Trying to get them to talk.
I'll try to keep this short, because I have to like go. This is my first year, and I chose to be a Link leader because I had really good like... Jeez, Link leaders, my freshman year, and I just want to like spread that wealth and like try and make everybody's freshman year as good as it can be.
So, you know, in conclusion, obviously, it's not just for the freshmen, but it's for these guys as well. The growth that I see throughout the school year by second years are like these big-time veterans compared to the first years, and I just, I watch this growth, and Pete and I are just so proud of these kids, and they're navigating really as adults in a safe, protective setting, but, you know, they don't always get the thank yous. And sometimes, they don't get the kids that talk to them, and that's real world. And that's what we're giving them, so they'll be able to navigate better when they get out into the adult world. So, it's a two-fold reward system, and we're very proud of our program. We have a ton of support from Mr. Peterson. He loves us, and he will continue to love us.
Link Crew, what they do is we talk about SCL a lot. This is SCL in action, and I think they're just wonderful, so kudos to them.
So, thank you.
Mr. Schleggenoff, I want to thank you and the ladies for presenting tonight. You know, I am here over the summer, and I see the trainings and what you do and the mess you make in the community room.
We always hang out.
And just the time and effort, and again, what you do to support our incoming freshmen. It's amazing, and to know that, you know, on the Friday of the first week of school, you know, you had the kickball, or you, you know, you're giving out donuts, you're sticking things on their lockers and welcoming them. It's just, it's good. It's good stuff, and the reason I wanted you to be here tonight is because I think sometimes people just don't see those things in action. If you're not in this building, you don't know what good, you know, these ladies and you and Mr. Beuler are doing, so thank you. And hopefully, the community now realizes that we have this program in place to help support our kids, and it's great work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Ladies, real quick, you're in a really interesting situation here, because you're in a mentorship sandwich, right? You are leaders right now, but you're being mentored by two very great individuals and how to work with people that you are currently mentoring. Like Mr. Schleggenoff said, this is real-world stuff, and leaders are... Their good leaders are hard to find, and they can take people in directions that are not the right directions to go. But from what you're saying, your intentions are great, and it's going to set you up for college, the workforce, and really listen to what Mrs. Schleggenoff and Mr. Beuler say. They chose you to be leaders, lead, and we're very grateful for what you do. So, thank you very much, Mr. Schleggenoff. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, you're up next. Mrs. Cudney, Mrs. Starkweather, I believe you're up next tonight. And Ms. Cudney, Lauren did not go with you to Chicago, did she?
No, well, I tried to take her with me.
She would not? She would not go?
I told her, no.
I do.
All right, and the full screen's at the bottom.
Technology is not our forte. So, hello, everybody. Hello, my Board of Education. I'm Lindsay Cudney. I am the elementary school nurse here at OA.
I'm Kathleen Starkweather. I'm the middle high school nurse.
All right, so here's a little bit about us. Okay. Together, Lindsay and I serve on the Board of Directors of the New York State Association of School Nurses as co-representatives of Zone 12. We also serve on the advocacy committee for NACASIN. Members of the committee joined NACIT in Albany this past May, and one of the things that they were advocating for was an RN in every school building in New York City. Because, believe it or not, there is a mountain of nurses in every school. So, as you can see on the picture here, Zone 12, we're in orange. There's nine counties that make up Zone 12, so it's our glow region, Monroe County, Ontario County, Yates, Sonica, and Wayne. And actually, we counted the other day, and we have the most counties. Maybe not the most surface area, but the most counties in our region. It's a lot, it's a lot. So, what is a Zone representative? So, a Zone representative is an active member of NACASIN, and again, advocating for a school nurse in every New York State school. NACASIN membership is renewed annually, and you also become a member of the National Association of School Nurses if you are a member of NACASIN. It's a professional school nurse who recognizes the importance of professional involvement, who improves student outcomes, a conduit for communication between national, state, county, district, and individual school nurses. We're the voice of our Zone 12 to the Board of Directors at NACASIN, and we're responsible for recruitment of new NACASIN members. We host meetings and guest speakers to share information and camaraderie with other members in our Zone. Our first one of this school year, we're having in October, and we have a speaker coming to talk to us about the latest prescription life treatment, so... Hopefully, we'll share some information with our fellow Zone 12 nurses. Kathleen and I also attend Board of Directors meetings for NACASIN. Some of the most recent board meetings have been held in New York City, Binghamton, Syracuse, and all by name, so it's all over New York State. Okay, the NACASIN conference, which we were fortunate enough to attend in Chicago in June to July, was four days full of incredible information and opportunity. There were many group and breakout sessions that covered various topics relevant to our school nursing profession. The focus of some of the sessions including, included supporting school attendance, mental health, diabetes education, asthma, human growth, and the school nurse's role in post-vention crisis...
asthma, human growth, and the school nurse's role in post-vention crisis response. Uh, one group session, which we'd like to just briefly talk about tonight in particular, stood out to both of us. Uh, discussing hopelessness and activating hope. We are so grateful for the opportunity to attend NASSAN. Uh, we feel extremely validated in our practice and roles as school nurses for our OA community.
The next slide is just a little thank you. This is us at NASSAN. Um, thank you for investing in the health and education of our students through your support of our attendance at such a distinguished conference. It was truly, Kathy has been before, but for me, I mean, I walked in, I was starstruck. It was amazing to see all of these school nurses and just kind of network.
It was about two thousand nurses from actually all around the world. It wasn't just our country.
Yeah, so it was pretty amazing. So thank you for that. Okay, so a little bit, this is the, um, nursing, school nursing practice framework. So it's kind of this little picture. Um, the framework you see here is a tool for advancing the practice of school nursing. Our main goal is to support our students to be safe, healthy, and ready to learn. Um, as you can see, like in the picture, this where it says school nurse, it's meant to represent, thank you Kathy. It's meant to represent a, a nurse with his or her arms outstretched and kind of embracing all of the inside, what's, what's inside there and that's kind of.
You should replace that visual with Kathy.
We were technology savvy.
We're going to put, we're going to put our faces in there. So again, it shows the, the nurse's arms outstretched embracing everything and the complexities of the clinical specialty practice of school nursing. So as you can see, the, the students are like the main center focus focal point as well as our school community and our, our families in the community. Um, school nursing has evolved so much over the past several years and, you know, we are so much more than just Band-Aids and ice packs. I know we joke about it, but.
All the time.
But there is so much in just even this little picture of what we do. Um, so the standards of practice, um, obviously for school nursing is to practice consistently within the scope and standards of school nursing. Federal, state, local policies, health and education laws, and of the NASSAN mission and Board of Ethics. Um, safety and confidentiality, um, with HIPAA and for book compliance. Um, integrate evidence-based and best practice and critical thinking and clinical judgment based on the nursing process and nursing prioritization. Um, and then some examples of our duties as school nurses, they're kind of outlined in those four things. Um, there with care coordination, quality improvement, leadership, and community and public health. Uh, for care coordination, we provide direct care for all mental and physical health needs for our students, um, including chronic, emergent, and episodic. Um, we facilitate the continuity of care. We develop and implement plans of care for these students. Um, collaborate with families, school community, mental health, the entire mental health team, our counselors, our social worker psychologist, um, our admin, um, and the medical home or physicians. Um, leadership responsibilities include or are not limited to, um, interpreting school health inform, information for not only for students and families, but staff. Um, advocating for district and state policies or procedures that reduce risk and risk and support of appropriate care. And engaging in and influencing, uh, decision-making in educational healthcare programs.
Uh, for quality improvement, we participate in data collection surveys, which include the BMI and the immunization survey. Uh, we identify questions that could be resolved with research and evidence-based practice. We use data to identify individual and population level student needs. For community and public health, we provide inclusive and holistic culturally sensitive care. We teach disease prevention and health promotion. Uh, we conduct health screenings. We collaborate with community partners to provide health expertise to schools, work, and community. So this, this is the, um, discussion that we really were impacted by at the NASSAN conference. Uh, the following is a statistic from 2021 regarding hopelessness. Forty percent of adolescents and fifty-seven percent of young girls experience persistent feelings of hopelessness. This is a sixty percent increase over the past decade. Hopelessness leads to numerous adverse consequences. All risky behaviors in school, violence, self-harm, weapon carrying. Hopelessness is the only consistent predictor of violence in the adolescents and the single consistent predictor in suicide. Loneliness, anxiety, and depression, substance abuse, um, and use and poor health outcomes.
Okay, so our, um, defin, the definition of hope here, um, a vision for something in your future fueled by both positive feelings and inspired actions. Um, this is by Catherine Getzky. She was the presenter of, um, The Hope presentation at, um, NASSAN. She's a distinguished author and speaker, um, all over, at conferences all over the nation. Um, she shares her personal struggles with, she lost her father to suicide. She had her own suicide attempt and suffered with many, many years of addiction. Um, so Catherine found through her extensive, extensive research that hope is a measurable, teachable, and learnable and changeable thing. Um, higher hope is directly linked to improved overall health. Decreased recovery time after injury, um, academic success, um, improved sleep, greater resilience against stress, protection against anxiety and depression, and a greatly, um, deep, deep, sorry, reduced risky behaviors. Um, Catherine's book, um, that she wrote is called The Biggest Little Book About Hope, which is right here and Kathy and I each have a copy. So, um, if anyone's ever interested in, in reading about that, we can share.
Shine Hope. This is one of the tools, um, that Catherine discusses in her lessons that she can provide for schools and in her book. Uh, the mnemonic Shine Hope stands for Stress Skills, Happiness Habits, Inspired Actions, Nourishing Networks, and Eliminating Challenges. The five Ps to Shine Hope used as a framework for instilling hope in young people. Um, some examples, stress skills, and I think we've all used this within our offices, classrooms, um, teaching breathing techniques, encouraging exercise, meditation, uh, ninety-second pause, not reacting immediately to whatever stressors are attacking you. Uh, happiness habits, healthy long-term actions, uh, good nutrition, setting goals, morning routines, experiencing gratitude. She talks a lot about that in her book, being able to experience gratitude in your life. Um, smiling purposefully. Uh, inspired actions, measurable goal setting. Uh, chunk down your goals. You can have stretch goals for a long-term purpose, but maybe chunk them down to make them more achievable. Overcoming obstacles. Uh, nourishing networks, um, to me is the most near and dear to my heart. It's the connection that we make with kids here at school, uh, connections that they have with their peers, their teachers, um, you know, all the staff. Um, when they can get some recognition, some praise, empathy, compassion, um, their faith can be a nourishing network. Friends, family. Um, eliminating challenges, trying not to control what's out of your control. Internalizing failures, worrying, all-or-nothing thinking. Hopeful minds, shine hope. That was the big message.
Okay, and so we're going to kind of wrap up with a quote from Christopher Reeve, "Once you choose, hope anything is possible." So again, this presentation, um, we just want to share a little bit with you guys. It really resonated with both of us. It was super impactful. Um, it's a universal concept that not only can be utilized with us in school, with our students, with our, our colleagues, with, with anyone, but in our personal lives as well. So, um, and it's important to remember that in order for us to support our students and our school community, we need to be mindful of ourselves and take care of ourselves and, um, make that a priority as well. So we just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy and Lindsay. I, um, you are two of the best. Um, thank you for all that you do for our district, our kids, our staff, uh, on a day-to-day basis and, um, very much appreciated and, and thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Will this be a one-and-done thing? You guys, would you, will you be attending like another one of, I, I'm going to miss.
Yes, please.
Yeah, yes.
The, the, the conference is annual. So next year is in Austin, Texas. We would love to go.
Let's just say that it was, it was huge. I had, that we were representing New York there. So we also bring all that information back to our zones and to the other districts in New York State.
So then, like, how, how do you, how are you chosen as the representatives then? I, I, is.
We volunteer.
You volunteer?
Yes. There were no reps for our zone for years.
Okay.
Years.
So then how do you disseminate this information? Do you have to go back and present this as well to?
So we have, we, um, have a newsletter. I think we handed it.
Yes, yeah.
So we send out a newsletter three, four times a year to our zone nurses. Um, and right now those just go to, I believe, the ones who are NASSAN nurses, correct?
Right, um, I do share a little on the side.
We are trying to recruit, that's like a big thing. We're trying to recruit. It's, I think of the huge area that we have and we haven't had a zone representative in years. There's not a lot of nurses in our zone that are NASSAN nurses. I mean, so they don't get the information that we get. They don't have the opportunities that we have, like.
They have a lot of resources.
Resources.
We're calling the New York State Helpline all the time and that's part of NASSAN.
And what's kind of unique about New York as well is when I first started a few years ago, New York State has what's called the School Nurse Orientation. Um, and I can say I don't know of any other states that have it and this was kind of apparent at conference. And so I went to Skinni Atlas for three days and went to a school nurse orientation. And it went through pretty much New York State laws and what you do as a school, I mean, from basics.
A to Z.
A to D about, everything about being a school nurse. I mean, you go to nursing school, you learn little tidbits about how to be a nurse and typically it's all inpatient nursing and a lot of people are in the inpatient world. So, I mean, I got, I was a nurse for nine years before I came into school nursing and it was a whole different realm. So.
School nursing is very autonomous and it can be extremely scary when you first start. So it was a huge help.
Yeah.
So yes, please, we would love to attend.
And you went to one of these before Kathy, you said?
I have, yes.
Like how long ago was that?
Before, before COVID.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So big difference, change, or how they evolved it, or what, you know, as far as their presentations, they obviously come up with different, you know, focus.
Right, a large focus too. They have, they have so many breakout sessions. So you can pick and choose, which is great. Um, the human growth one that I went to was amazing because it was all about puberty and adolescence and so many things that even I, you know, don't always hear about or read about every day. So that was huge helpful. Um, but a big focus at NASSAN, even worse so than our New York State conference, is leadership. And that's important. I mean, we, you know, there's only two of us, but, you know, we do have a big leadership role within our school community. So it's very empowering. I can't even, like, that's the only word that comes to mind. Very empowering.
In the, the medical world in general, the health, I mean, having a shift to a lot of the mental health and the changes and the focus, obviously, hopelessness. I mean, you go to every doctor's appointment, everybody, no matter what age, are you depressed, hopeless, how many feelings of this? You know, those aren't just, yes, they're check-off-the-box questions, but if you get one, one person at one point, someone that connects with that and you help someone, I mean, that's, that's just, you know, it's underestimated, I guess. And I'm, I'm loving to see it at such an early age be incorporated. So this is kind of going to be, yes, routine, but it's awareness. And it's, it's great that you guys are being able to connect with that. So thank you. It's wonderful.
I think too, when you're with, with the positions that you hold, it's easy to get on an island, right? And then just kind of do what you have been doing and not that that's wrong at all, but, um, you have to do a lot. Just, just your documentation and your record keeping is more than people have any idea of, of the percentage of time in your day that that takes, um, is incredible. But then to, you know, be a sanctuary for kids to come down who are just needing to get out of their classroom for a minute and, and you're providing them with an ear or an extra snack that they were embarrassed to ask for. You do so many things, uh, for them. And then to look at some of these bigger, pitch-killer issues, I, I thought, you know, the attendance stuff is huge, right? Like, boy, if we could figure that out, we'd be in great shape because it's hard to teach a kid that's not in class, right? So like, I, I am a huge advocate to get anybody to these workshops or seminars or something at this magnitude, as long as they can come back and use it. And it seems as if, yeah.
Like you say, empowerment, you want to give that, I mean, that's, that's what it's about. It doesn't stop with you. It carries on.
And like, and like Kathy says, there were breakout sessions and we had to choose and that was really hard because at each time, there was like a timed chunk. There was maybe three, three or four sessions and we wanted to go, we wanted to hit them all up. We couldn't. Um, but it was just so much. We did and we shared, yes, which is great.
That's awesome. Sounds like a great experience.
Yeah.
I think just one of the perspectives that I wanted to point out is I think everyone can remember if you have children, like your kid's first day of school, right? You're nervous, you're anxious, you don't really know the people. And that's a big feeling as a parent to give your kid to, to people that, you know, you have to trust them. But then there's other kids that have medical issues that rely on you. So imagine that parent on the first day. Not only am I turning them over to a faculty that I have to say, please love my baby and trust that you're going to take care of them. But we also have to look to the nursing department and, you know, our medical department and say, hey, my kid also has these medical issues and I'm trusting you to keep them safe, not, not just the academics, but I'm actually trusting that you're going to keep them safe every day. And some of those are small medical needs and some of those are larger. So I think conferences like this and trainings like this where you can go outside of this, but you're not going to get, you know, professional development here on things like that. So the more you can go and absorb that knowledge from outside and bring it in and apply it here, right here to our students. I agree with Justin. I think it's amazing and, um, I hope that we can do more of that.
It's amazing how things change from your, I mean, it's constant with medicine. Um, but, uh, there was also a great section on our documentation and the legal aspects and that's huge. I mean, we, in everything we say or write or type, there's a lot of process in there.
I mean, you know, if you're, if you're familiar with, like, if you, if it's not documented, it's not done. And I mean, we're seeing, there's, I mean, during cold and flu season, I might have forty, fifty kids come in my office. And if I don't document right there, everything that I've done with this kid, I'm trying to remember. So it's a huge legality thing too and it's, it's hard, but.
Are there improving ways for you to document? Are there efficiencies that are happening for you or is that?
The electronic health record definitely has helped.
Yeah, yeah. It does.
Definitely helps.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
My memory is still pretty good.
Well, the older nurses.
Albron, way out, Lindsay.
I didn't mean it like that. Just driving notes down to remind myself.
I did almost lose my car keys when we got back to the airport.
But yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, uh, JC, um, more about the wrestling program.
The last time we met, um, I gave you some homework. And, uh, asked me to delve into, with a little more clarity, some of, um, financials and also put together a summary for you of where we've been. This is now stretched out over a couple of meetings. So my goal was to briefly put that together for you. We are here because Deputy, Deputy Alejandro came to me with a demonstrated interest to have a modified diversity wrestling program. Last year he helped a club for twelve weeks for seven eighth graders and five sixth graders, which is why his initial thoughts were that you would need a high school program and a modified program to fit the kids who were currently interested last year going into this year. Uh, in every case, for those particular students, their academic performance increased exponentially. I'll get back to that in my last slide as well, but that's kind of what got me here the first time to speak with you was Deputy Alejandro saying, I have kids that I can help. They're interested. Um, I think it'd be good for them and engage them. The proposal was for both levels, a varsity and a modified program. Sent out an interest survey. There were a very low number of total responses, but of the very low total, nineteen students did express interest. Our best estimate would be probably ten mod kids and twelve varsity kids would potentially come out this year. I think we might have estimated a little low, but it'd probably be around that number. I did have discussions before the last board meeting about the minimal impact this would have on existing sports. And then the financials, I worked with Christine to break these down to give you both a per first year cost, a next year cost, and then an annual cost. So that in the red, or it would be your annual cost, our varsity high school program would be on the top of about six thousand dollars per year annually. Modified program of about thirty-two hundred dollars a year annually after the initial costs. And that's a moratorium, how some of those things over a three-year period get to annual costs. Did I use the right word, Christine? I know the financials were a huge part, and they're broken down here, any questions for me on the financial part?
Some of that stuff, so when I wrestle, we had to buy all our own stuff at the, which is just, that's what we always did, you know. So I guess they got a thought of why, I think, I know the kids that he's probably targeting are an issue, but I'm really trying to dive into this, make this happen, is that a, see that as being a?
Absolutely, and I talked to Deputy Alejandro, he said, everything is on the table, he really just wants the opportunity for the kids, so, um, you know, logistically and the numbers, we can, we can make it work. We would probably have to buy singlets this year, headgear isn't expensive, if we had kids to buy headgear, they would need their own wrestling shoes anyway, we'd need mat tape. We'd, we'd make things work if, if the kids had the opportunity, whatever that looks like. So yes, the answer to your question is yes, we could, we could be flexible on some of those costs. This would be to put it together and do things in congruency with other programs that we are supporting.
Really, the mat tape, the coaching, really knowing that you have to have financials.
Singlets, I think we have, we have purchased both wheels.
We always purchased our own, it's like, that was transportation.
We could look at that too.
That's not really something you typically launder and pass on, right, usually wrestlers.
Traditionally, they are passed on, used for multiple years.
That's why we like to buy our own.
Yeah.
I mean, if kids wasn't.
I'm not wearing yours ever, since I.
To put it, to put it in perspective, the district does buy swimsuits for the students, for the swim program.
I, I paid forty dollars last year for mine.
Yes.
Yes, in the previous years, in the previous years.
Interesting.
And the rest of them, they're cost about ninety dollars in a competitive swimsuit. So the fundraising that every team does, and our swim team fundraised, they gave back fifty percent, so our cost to the kids and financial support. So that is notoriously bad. And again, it's, it, but that just brings me up to kind of, are we, I don't know what other programs are doing and what other programs don't have or do have. I know a lot of fundraisers that happen are largely supplying a lot of the warmups, I mean, for a lot of the teams, for a long history. But are we currently, like, do we have everything we need for our current teams existing? I, I don't, I don't know.
So I'm, that's, I'm the, I've been in a process, process with Christine, are you waiting that for each team? So there, for the most part, we're very well supplied, um, and I was specifically working with our swim team, um, looking at what we currently do and what options we have for that particular issue you were talking about. So I'm open to what's best for our kids and working with Christine to make things happen, that's, that's why I enjoy the positions, to give kids opportunities and make sure they're doing what they're doing. The last slide for, I have for you for that is a reminder as to why we have the sports in our programs, as much as I'd love to compete, we have an opportunity and an obligation to try to engage as many youth as we have, as we can. And we have an opportunity here to engage some kids who are not currently engaged, that's the number one thing we, research tells us to do, to be more successful in our school culture, to be more successful in our student, student academics, our attendance. You can't penalize a kid into compliance, and you can't penalize a kid into being here, but if you engage them in an extracurricular, they want to be here. Research all points to the more we can engage our kids in outside the classroom activities, the better this place is going to be. So I'm here because I have a coach who thinks he has demonstrated interest and would like to provide the opportunity to engage kids who aren't. Any questions for me?
And your costs, um, JC, so there's nothing there for transportation?
Um, we don't calculate that for any other sport, so it would be what we do for any other sport.
Depending on how many needs you have, I mean, we really couldn't do that math, I mean, you know, we don't, I don't know what that structure would look like at this point in time.
I think for us, if we're wondering, you know, what the scope of the commitment is, you know, we, that's a number we need to know. And then participation in the various matches, right, there must be some sort of costs associated with that to cover.
So entry would be, there would be some tournaments similar to a cross-country program. So we send cross-country to six meets, I think we would send, potentially send wrestlers, depending on the level, up to five meets, or tournaments.
Do you have an estimate of that amount, like, how much those would take?
They average about two hundred dollars a week.
Two hundred, okay. And then I know one of the questions we had asked last time too, was just in terms of opportunities to, um, probably letting school districts that already had these programs, did, um, you do any exploration of that? Before you answered that question, I think you did a really nice job of organizing this for us too, so I just want to say that a lot, thank you for that.
I did reach out to all of our local schools, the only school that doesn't currently offer their kids an opportunity to wrestle is Elba. And they didn't respond to my request for if they'd be interested in partnering with us to do this. So I did reach out, everybody currently has opportunities for their kids to wrestle in this area.
Would, would any of them have been willing to take on one or two students?
They would, they're, most of them are merged with other school already, so there's, they don't, they don't, for the thirdies, it bumps them up into larger school territory.
Lindenville and Byronburg, it looks like, from last year's Sex from Five site, I just went on and looked and did a little research about what was currently happening. I mean, if they stand alone, but all the other schools are merged, I mean, I know we have a, a kid who plays hockey here, and obviously that was a whole grandfathered scenario thing, but those types of things, I mean, if, I, I don't know how you presented it or what the discussion was, but if it's, you know, can we bring up ten to twelve kids to your, I don't know if that would be appealing. Or, or sharing an opportunity, I don't know if joining with us, but having like, hey, if we want really strong two varsity kids, not one of those schools would have not one. It's pretty, that's unfortunate.
It's tough, because I've seen, so, like I said last time, Kendall for years, Jim Sauber was a, a heck of a great, heck of a good guy. And he, for, I think, close to forty years, he had a program there, and then Mike Born took it over, and Mike.
And wrestled with Mike.
Is, is, he's a good dude, uh, he's in Brockport now, and since he left, the program has failed. Um, and I don't mean that in a way that they're, it, it, they just don't have the numbers, and they've had to merge with Holly, and Holly, for a long time, had Grillo, uh, and Grillo.
You have to have the Pied Piper.
It is, but I, it's one of those things, you're looking at two powerhouse wrestling school districts for many, many decades that have faded away to just a couple of handfuls.
It's actually searching, and wrestling right now is the number one growing sport in the country, and it's growing because of the prevalence of women being able to participate as well. So there is a complete wi- women's wrestling section that's begun to emerge, they actually compete freestyle, which is the Olympic style.
Mike, this figure, she'd love to do it, she's, she heard about this, she would love it.
Riley?
Oh, absolutely.
I have a class with her, I think.
Ma, I want to do that, ma, I want to do that, it's like, I want to do everything. But, yeah, I mean, it is, it's definitely, um, it's definitely all over the place, it's good, I mean, and, and it definitely goes with a long, every, every sport that we, um, it's great that we can have opportunities, for sure, explore them.
JC, I know you mentioned last time about the clubs, um, not being able to be at a club again this following year, but for us as a board, looking at this as a one-year type perspective, not really knowing what the value is long-term at this point? Is there any way it can become a club again this coming year?
I can't actually find any information that states that you can only be paid for one year as a club advisor, you only, you can only volunteer for one year, you can be a club advisor without getting paid.
So there's past practice here where in, at OA, you do the club for the first year gratis, and then it gets negotiated in a contract, so there's some.
Practice, past practice, but it's not educational law, or what you have.
Oh, nothing here, it's, it's not educational law, it's just OATA past practice.
The only concern that I just, I have with that is, um, you know, you have somebody to, to go out for a year or for a season, put their time, put their energy, try to get things going, you know, they do document, they do record all of these things. They do spend an enormous amount of time, you know, free time, giving up their free time to do this. And usually when there's an interest, and like you said, past practice or not, if there's something that we're able to bring to the board or bring to the community and have it started, we do. Um, I think it's, it's not, I don't think it's appropriate to ask for another year of, hey, well, let's see what happens next year, and have him spend all of this, they're not going to do it. Um, you know, they go out on a limb and, you know, try to round up interest and, like I said, spend all their time. I don't know many people that would spend that time all over again, um, you know.
And, you know, the other component of that is, the kids wanted to compete, and when he looked at, hey, if we're a club, I can take you to a, a weekend tournament, but it's going to cost you forty bucks to compete, and if I can't pay for that, I'm not going. So there's a, there's an equity issue with the club, that they can't, they, a lot of them can't, or won't make it to the weekends to compete without the school support.
That's unfortunate, and I completely understand that, and I also get the, the concern you're raising to Jack here, but I think there's also, the fiscal responsibility, I think, hasn't changed from our perspective, because we're sitting in, coming off of a rough budget here. And to me, like, our priority has to be education first, and making sure that we have the financial support for the educational opportunities for students as well. Obviously athletics is super important, not dumb, not at all, but I think that no one's sitting here saying, you know, this specific one person who's dedicated their time, it's not worth it, or it's not worthy of potentially building this. We're just saying the timing is not great, right? And so if next year we're looking at a very different budget scenario, I'd be in favor of this, I think it's a great opportunity, I think that is only truly the interest, which you did a great job of proving it out, and at least for everything you're sharing, makes a lot of sense to me. I think that just fundamentally, there's a lot of people that dedicated their time without being compensated for it. I know, you know, frankly, my husband coaches the Titans and runs the program, and he spends a ton of time on that, and I'm not saying that Officer Alejandro has to do that in order to have this continue. But I think there is an opportunity that if it's about the kids and we truly want to have the program for them, that that is something that, if there's a will, there's a way, right? And so I think that just from my perspective, I think it's an amazing thing that you guys have done, you've done this work, I just can't see being in favor of the financials behind it at this point in time.
I think we also have a few other clubs that have participated in grants and getting funding for themselves. Um, I mean, the Lego Robotics crew that was just in here, I think that was notoriously a non-stipend position for many years, um, before, a few years ago when it became stipend, still fell under the OA umbrella. Um, and I believe a lot of their funding was done through grants, so.
All of it.
All of us.
All of it?
All of us.
It's still, it's still.
Still is.
So I, I find it hard, and I love, exactly what Mallory had to say, you know, we're in a really sticky position right now, and, gosh, I would love to see that program develop, but it's really hard to say to the community, yeah, we're going to fund this, but yeah, we have to take away from other educational areas or other sports. So if there's any other opportunity for grants or, you know, being creative, that would be ideal at this point.
And I think it's a tough time, like, as far as, you know, th- this budget for this year is, you know, kind of wrapped up and done a long, long time, I mean, really a long time ago, it feels like, you know, so, in, in coming even a couple months and starting those conversations, that's, that budget, that's kind of, and it was incredibly challenging. It was a really tough thing, and then, you know, now we're looking at something that's like, this is a wish, and it's, it's wonderful, um, but that's still, it's, it's just not, not in the budget. We would have to really, really be creative, and before that would happen, from my perspective, I would love to know, are current programs, are they substantiated enough? I would love to know, I don't know, and again, this is your kind of first, first year in this whole scenario, but do we have substantiated groups of athletic programs right now? Do they have what they need to, to supply them? I mean, again, hearing that, well, we didn't know that the swimsuits weren't, and again, those can't be returned, but those are bought every year, and not one portion of it was paid by the school, but that's their uniform. And you know how many years they've had to show up multiple weeks behind schedule and not having a uniform, and now had to wear their own? Can't tell you, and that's only in history, that's only because I know it's history, I have kids in that program. So that's a tough thing to know, that those kids have to go out with the eight kids that they have, and all mix and match suits, they're not a team, they didn't look like a team, we're actually pretty embarrassed repeatedly. So that's a tough thing for me to say, hey, I don't think we're doing our absolute best for the entire scope of what we currently have, and if we want to be number one here at OA, I think we need to really substantiate that and, and do the data, and look at that and explore that. And, you know, we have a building condition survey that we have to do every five years here, to look at our assets, look at our buildings, see what, that helps us plan it, you know? Maybe that's something in the athletic world and programs we can start doing, I don't know what's currently in place right now, but yearly, we have to kind of go year by year. I mean, how many times did football go from eight man to eleven man? I mean, that was kind of year by year basis for a while, based on true numbers, you know? So diluting the opportunities that we have with the same kids, the same parents who pay, the same fundraisers that support all these current programs, and there's a lot of fundraisers that go around every single program, every single athletic program. I try to support all of them as much as I can, but it's kind of the same pool, the same people doing the same things, but for some of these things, and we don't even know that the fundraiser supported those uniforms, that's not school. So I don't know, that kind of just makes me wonder if we just need to really look at what we currently have and maximize that before kind of adding anymore.
Thanks, JC. JC, thank you, uh, glad.
Appreciate your time, you said.
Yeah, thanks, JC.
Okay, Carla, visitor requests tonight, do we have anybody? Oh, my goodness, I jumped right down to the visitor, I've got to approve the minutes, sorry, Carla, I put you on the spot.
I, they call me now, now I'm.
Yeah, 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 John's on the target there, sorry, guys. Uh, okay, on the minutes, be it resolved at the minutes of the August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting be approved, can I get a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Maria, uh, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion passes. All right, here we go, I was excited to see a visitor, I suppose, is there, are there any here for us, Carla?
There are none.
Okay, thank you, so, sorry, guys. Uh, item five, approval of warrants, excuse me, be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and internal claims, auditor reports be approved. Excuse me, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Got a second down there, second? Uh, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, uh, treasurer's reports, be it resolved that the treasurer's reports for July twenty-twenty-four be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Maria, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, thanks, Matt, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, John, policy seventy-five eleven, immunization.
Policy, yeah, uh, so this is your first reading of seventy-five eleven, um, in regards to immunizations and required immunizations. Um, I just want to let the board know that after this next capital project, we do have a lot on our table, um, I would like to possibly put a subcommittee of the board together, um, and have policy services come in. Um, I've been talking to area school districts in regards to keeping policies updated, and, and of course, it's, it's a major overhaul, you know, everybody is, is, you know, sinking and drowning. Um, but what we're looking to do is possibly over a year, eighteen months, um, revisit every single policy in our manual, I believe the last time, it looks like.
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six.
Right.
So, um, you know, obviously, I'm trying to keep you updated with, with policies. Um, this one came across our table, um, just because obviously, uh, within the last, you know, two years, New York State has removed the religious exemption part of immunizations for schools attending, or for students attending school. So we're just updating this policy, really gets rid of that clause that we, we offer up a religious exemption. Um, you know, we did have a, a situation a couple of years ago where we ran into this, and that's when, you know, this new law from New York State came out, um, you know, we, you know, we were victorious, but, um, you know, when people do happen to look at policies of different school districts and they're somewhat not up to date, um, it's not that we're in the wrong, we just, you know, obviously, we have to go by ed law. And, um, so this one came across our, our table, so it's up for review. I recommend that the board approve it tonight, although this is your first reading, really the only issue is we removed the religious exemption. Yep. And then obviously, the old policy states specific times and dates and whatever, obviously, the nurses go out, you know, when your child enters a certain gray level, the immunizations that you need. We still have a grace period in case, you know, somebody is enrolling or doesn't have it, um, but, you know. Um, but, you know, policy before you should, you know, as written, like you said, without the religious, religious exemption.
A lot of bells and whistles. I don't think on this one, it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if, what people's thoughts were. Natalie, what are you thinking?
So the only thing, um, well, and it doesn't even pertain to this, but I know there's usually a vaccination scheduled, so I didn't know if that needed to be included in here.
No, not in the policy because it is, it is state law.
Right.
And we, you know, when, when children enroll, yes, it, yes, it covers it, yep.
So like that.
It's very easy to see, um, on any sort of website, the immunizations and what is required, yes.
Okay.
But I do have a question, just because it does list in the first policy, the exact immunizations, like, the diseases we're immunizing against. But the second one, is that a standard change in the policy or is it, I guess, a rationale?
No, because, well, keep in mind that this old policy is from two thousand six. It was different times back then. So when they update their immunizations and the state requires certain ones, um, they update those. What would happen if, if all of a sudden, you know, in six months, they require, you know, I'll just say a monkey pox, you know, vaccination, then every single school district would have to change their policy. So what they do is they upload into the website. And when we have people that, you know, ask or enroll, obviously, when they enroll, the nurses keep track and make sure that, before we even enroll, that they're okay medical-wise. Um, and then if they're not, then our nurses reach out and say, hey, you're missing this, you're missing that. And that's why there's a built-in grace period of, of the fourteen days where they prove that they're gonna, you know, have a doctor's appointment and get those vaccinations. So, um, everyone policies doesn't wanna be so specific with the policy that, that it handcuffs the district. That's why it's eliminated.
Just, is that applicable for McKinney-Vento students as well, that you're trying to track down with their medical records?
That's a whole different other situation.
Yeah, I know it's listed in here, um, so I think, I think it points that out, but, um.
That's on a case-by-case basis and, yeah, so.
And then the only other part, um, you know, all the other grade levels, any kid can come in at any time, but with the universal pre-K with a certain amount of, amount of seats, um, are you guys still abiding by that fourteen-day window? Cause a lot of kids nowadays, I'm noticing, like, they're doing that slow roll of immunizations, right? They're not, they're not dosing them how like we did with our kids. They spread them out over time. So I think they're giving them now until November, which is well beyond fourteen days to get caught up on those immunizations before they would lose their spot. So universal pre-K, I think, might be a little bit different.
And they, not to speak for Heather, but she hasn't done a full cycle of this. Um, having, when we start in February and really kind of get that conversation started, we've been able to avoid all of those conflicts. Um, Lindsay does a fantastic job talking to teachers, talking, or, sorry, excuse me, parents, working directly with the doctors. So to a release, so she can call the nurse or the doctor and really have a deadline and understanding. Um, so thus far, we have not had any major hiccups with that.
It's a lot to organize though, isn't it, Lynn, like this, so you've got to kind, so is that right? I'm out of pre-K.
She has a whole spreadsheet. She's got it all set up. You know, every kid, everything they should have. Lindsay will put in what immunizations come in, the physicals, the dental records, everything, so that they highlight, so that if Heather needs to step in and make some contact, she has that ability to, um, and we've, we've had a great process for the last few years.
Wow. Another fun thing to track, right?
It's not something that one person can run, you know, Heather is going to rely heavily on Lindsay and Kim.
Sure.
Um, and there's a whole system and a, that they've worked it out beautifully.
It's a good point. I guess I had no idea, I didn't realize that. So the, for, for, for pre-K kids, it's, they're not getting them like we used to, or like for my kiddos, we did whatever, like.
There's some conversations about whether or not there's some developmental disabilities or neurological disabilities that are affected. So some families are choosing to go a little slower with their rollout.
Just instead of getting the full dose all at once, you're still getting the same quan- quantity, right? You're just stretching them out. So you get half of the dose one visit, and then you come back four weeks, you get another half of the dose. So they're getting the same amount of vaccines, it's just taking significantly longer. So some of the kids come in and they don't meet the requirements of the immunizations, but, um, the state is allowing them. They sit, they look at it and they say, okay, by November, you have to be fully caught up.
So there's a draft, so there's like a that.
Correct. So it's a choice to spread them out.
So you could still get them.
And say, hey, the school just said November first, so set up a half dose, I'm gonna need the full dose for this, let's go. Yeah.
Okay.
But there's also an insurance component to it too. So like my, my ten-year-old who's due for vaccinations, I'm, I was a bad mother and missed that appointment. Um, so it got pushed out from June until September. And my insurance wouldn't bring that appointment up to June when she was due for her vaccinations and I should've had my paperwork in. But, um, yeah, so I had to wait until that September date, which is clearly past the thirty-day mark. So there is an insurance issue too, where you might have to wait on, uh, approval for that.
Yeah, but in terms of this policy, I think.
It has no bearing whatsoever.
The religious exemption.
And, and, and trust me, like Lynn said, it's very far and few, you know, and, and, you know, we talk to the families, you know. A lot of the times, if, if we know that we have a doctor's appointment and they're going, we say, we need you to come in the following day with, you know, with, with proof. Otherwise, you know, we're dropping your child. So, you know, we work at the families, um, but like I said, for the most part, it's, it's not a, it's not a big deal year to year.
Are we ready to move on, Ms. Paulson? Feel comfortable?
Yeah.
Let's be, okay.
Make a motion to approve policy seventy-five-eleven as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maria. Any more discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, guys. Uh, on to reports. Christine?
So, um, our year-end audit work was wrapped up, uh, last Tuesday, for the most part. Um, they were here on September ninth and worked over two days, which is, um, less than the usual three days. Um, that's possible because of the, um, outstanding work of the business office team, um, who provided much of the requested data and information, um, through the auditor's portal well ahead of time. And they were highly responsive during the auditor's visit. They, uh, the auditors actually came in at the end of the day and said, uh, you know, singing their praises. So, um, that really made me, as a, as a mom, happy of my team, um, and, and what they accomplished. Um, but anyways, they, they finished their, their field work in a, in a short day, um, timeframe. Um, they will be here on the October meeting to present the fina- the financial statements to you like they do annually. But they will be here on August fifteenth, and those audited financials are due to the state August fifteenth, and we will upload at that time.
October.
October, I'm sorry. I said August. I don't wanna let go of summer. Um, yeah, pre-audit financial results, I, I just said that with, um, with the board president and vice president last week. Um, and I also provided the board with the pre-audit financial results, um, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth. Um, along with those results, I include my recommendation for the allocation of the excess fund balance, um, and a draft of that un- annual, um, update to the reserve plan. Um, I hope that I was able to answer any questions that you had via email. Um, tonight's agenda includes approving that, um, allocation. Um, you know, we can just discuss that later if you want. I can provide more information. Um, and then in June, um, let's see, state reporting's going on right now. We're almost done with that. Um, and at the October fifteenth meeting, uh, we will also be bringing our twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar, um, to the board for, um, approval. I will get a draft out to all of you, um, based on, you know, feedback, um, and you can provide, provide me with any further feedback once I get that draft to all of you. I did present that to, um, Matt just last week, so. By the way, that's, that's really what I have.
Okay, thanks. Christine, uh, John?
Next week is homecoming week. There are a lot of fun and great activities happening in both of our buildings and on campus. Um, we also have our Red Cross Blood Drive next Tuesday from eight AM to two PM in the community room. And of course, um, you know, next week, there are a lot of home sporting events here on campus. And, um, we wrap kind of up the week with our homecoming football game scheduled for next Friday, starting at seven PM under the lights. Um, if you wanna mark your calendars, community, uh, next Friday is the Elementary Walk to School Day. I know that we'll probably next week send out a reminder for our ES families and students on when to gather at Triangle Park. I usually leave it spread around eight o'clock, eight-ten, and we take off by eight-fifteen. Um, and fingers crossed, Connie, that we have sunny weather for that morning. Uh, we're looking forward to seeing everybody out here.
We go. We've done it both, so.
Yeah. As I mentioned to the board previously, the district is undergoing a bus electrification survey and assessment with Wendell Architects. As part of, um, our consortium with Genesee Valley BOCs and the area school districts, we're partnering with Wendell to research our ability and costs associated with meeting the New York State guidelines for electrifying our bus fleet by twenty-thirty-five. We have provided all of the district's data regarding the size of our bus fleet, the specific mileage for each bus and daily bus runs, all of our athletic trips, our field trips, our longer annual trips, like, let's say, to Bolivar-Richburg or Camp Oswagachi. Um, all of that's been provided to Wendell. The architects were here last month to survey our bus garage and campus grounds to understand, you know, our capabilities and space for charging stations at, at the, at our current bus, you know, garage and, and, to look at the infrastructure. Um, they're gonna basically create and provide us with a conceptual charging strategy and final report, um, based on all of that information with cost estimates by the end of the school year. Fun stuff.
Remind us of the timeline of when we're supposed to be buying electric buses.
So we can purchase, um, diesel buses through two thousand twenty-seven. By December third, or thirty-first of two thousand twenty-seven, you can.
Is that why the, our, ours is taking so long, the two purchases that we have or other, are there's like a back order on?
No, there's other issues. I'm not as, I'm not party to the specifics of it, but it's not related to that. Although, it, you know, might seem that way. I don't believe that that's the issue that they're having.
So there's now like a run to bus maker and buy buses as much as you can?
No. Unless you wanna buy eighteen buses in two thousand twenty-seven, so we have them for ten years.
No, unless my wife gets a hold of it, no. She's at the market cornered on Record X boards, wherever the kind of boards are, we don't want any buses.
Yeah. So, so really what's gonna happen is you're gonna have, you're gonna have, you know, I don't think we have many, but if we have a bus that we did purchase in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, they're gonna be at their, end of their life by, you know, two thousand twenty-seven. Um, and I think what's gonna happen between twenty-seven and thirty-five is you're gonna slowly roll into it, um, just because you can't purchase any more diesel buses. But the fleet itself, um, is, is full EV by two thousand thirty-five. I'll be honest with you, um, knowing that some of the surveys and some of the things that are coming out, we're really in the second part of this. There's been, um, a handful of our, um, Genesee Valley schools that have already done this. I just, um, I think there's gonna be a lot of questions. I think there's gonna, obviously, funding questions. Where is all of this gonna be paid for, paid from, and, and by who? I, I just, I, I just.
I know you love being at the forefront of things, John, but maybe this one, we aren't the first to act with the electric buses. Let's wait a minute.
I've, I've always said that I, I can see us having some sort of hybrid where we have, um, you know, a handful of buses that do the shorter runs and all of that. But I think this rollout, the, the timing needs to be there. Let's say we are at the forefront and we have all EV, these EV buses, and we head down to a school that's two hours away, and they don't have anything. Where are we supposed to charge that bus? Where are we supposed to, I just, you know, I just, I think, I think the timeline is gonna be pushed back. And, um, you know, we're gonna go ahead and go through the motions, but I think there's gonna be a lot of questions. One of the things too was about, you know, purchasing this bu- these buses. Um, a lot of that, if it's not coming out of the general fund, the community needs to vote on it. You see a lot of school budget votes that have, we're gonna purchase two buses and this and this and that. What if the community says no? I, you know, I, there's just a lot of questions that need to be answered. So we're doing our due diligence. Um, we do have to report to the state each and every year of how we're moving towards this. And right now, we're basically saying that we're, you know, initially being assessed and looking at the costs and, you know, what these architects think we need, but, um, it, it's gonna be very interesting.
Wouldn't that be a capital project then to outfit the school bus?
I, um, I can't answer that. I can't imagine every single school district doing a capital project for this. I mean, you're talking, these buses are three hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece.
I guess I mean to, to install your charging stations and, you know, that infrastructure.
I would have to say that there has to be a lot of grant money's coming out, um, and grant funding.
Bosses are structured differently, right? You've gotta pay for it all down, right?
And, and you get it, it's a twelve-year.
Return, right, yeah.
You know, the transportation aid is, you know, um, I just, I, I, you know, I don't know. Just another thing that we're gonna have to deal with in the next few years. But, uh, like I said, we're doing our due diligence and at the, when I get the reports, I'll certainly share it with the board.
Sure.
Um, you know, nothing to worry about yet, but, you know, it's coming. Um, Jaycee, Jordan, Jaeger and I will, um, be attending a conference at Orchard Park High School in a few weeks regarding turf football fields. Orchard Park High School just, um, installed a new turf field. The workshop's gonna discuss, you know, the safety measures, how to properly maintain it, upkeep these fields. Um, I guess there's gonna be some, you know, specialists and some scientists and, and professionals talking about the safety and, and what to do and what not to do. So I felt that, you know, knowing that we're gonna have one here, you know, come next summer, that Jordan and Jaycee and I will attend that. I do believe, um, Tyler, who is our head football coach from Elba, he'll be joining us. So that's a, that's a morning workshop that I think will be very beneficial for us to go to. And I wanna congratulate, uh, Corinne Kofte, our volleyball varsity head coach. I'm being named the Batavia Daily Coach of the Week, so congratulations to Corinne. Um, her team is undefeated. And just to recap, we had a fantastic start to our school year. And I just want to express gratitude to all of our district employees, um, for their hard work and dedication in, in coming back. And I think it was a very smooth transition. Um, and, uh, the weather's been great for outdoor activities. You know, we hope it doesn't get any hotter, but, um, it's been great and we're already halfway through September. That's all I have.
Thanks, yeah, yeah. Thanks, John. Um, Lynn, any updates?
Yeah, we've been doing all things Medicaid, STACK and McKinney-Vento in my office. Um, we've had a lot of students moving into the district that had, um, a McKinney-Vento status or following through with that designation as another requirement. Um, and then just making sure that our STACK and our Medicaid paperwork is filed appropriately so that Christine and I are on the same page financially.
McKinney-Vento, could you explain to us just a little bit, Lynn?
So that's the, um, designation for a student that falls under the homeless category. And so we have students that become homeless within our district and move out, and we are responsible for their education. Or the opposite happens, so we had some students that moved into our district that became homeless, um, in a different location. And then we work with that district to make sure that that student is educated in transportation. And, um, we have grant money that we get from Title One that allows our social worker to make sure that that child has all the essentials to start school, whether it's sneakers for gym class or school supplies.
It's something that's increasing, I feel like, in all school districts. It's tough to track, it's tough to identify, it's a lot of hard work, I think, so, so thanks for your diligence there. John?
Um, we're off to a good start, start of the second full week of school. We have this year not just new staff members, but we have many existing staff members that are in new positions. And everybody in both buildings, whether they're a new teacher or a new. And everybody in both buildings, whether they're a new teacher or a new teacher in a new position, is off to a great start. I think our students are enjoying their new teachers and seeing some new faces or seeing old faces in new locations. So, we're just off to a great start.
Thanks, Connie. Heather?
Hi. We're having a great start to our year. It's been a really smooth rollout. I'm really excited to start my first official full year at OA. So, it was beautiful to see all the kids back after a more quiet summer and hear some voices and laughter in the hall. Second begin, and we are like going full blast. So, MTSS has began. Mr. Lamar is leading our student council. We have shifted to completely student-led announcements. So that's something that we're really enjoying is just hearing the kids' voices on the announcements and it's really helping them find some leadership roles. And they're super proud of themselves. So, excited to see, see what you're getting.
We had gold stars today at the dinner table. You went into Lauren's class and read, "Our school is our family," or "One school, one family," or what?
Our school is a family.
Is that right? So I was listening. So you did a nice job. She said she's a really good reader. So, excellent job. You keep your literacy skills sharp. There's always this devil watching.
I appreciate that.
Matt?
I'll echo what a lot of people have said. It's a great start to the year. I feel like it doesn't really, if you don't make your strides, either two homecoming weeks, that's next week. Then it'll really feel like we're off. We'll print our first student support sheet on Monday. And I'll present probably at a November or December meeting some data of the three years we've been running it. It's been spectacular. Consistently, three years of, of supporting our kids, which is what we vowed to do then. And we'll continue to do this year. We'll print that list on Monday after school and on Saturdays, helping kids overcome some struggles. That'll start next week.
Thanks, Matt, for all that after-school support. Nathan was talking to me today. He needed a little after-school support 'cause he didn't like the ADA down his science dust.
And I was thrilled. We started this weekend like a trial run. We have tutors in there and it's not really well advertised yet. Actually, we'll have kids, we'll have to hurt them in there. But, but there was two kids who showed up today, so kudos to those two who volunteered to show up and give some support. It was great.
Yeah, he, he's like, "I couldn't believe all the teachers there today." And I said, "That's the idea, buddy. That's the idea." So, so thank you for that opportunity.
We're reading with enthusiasm. We're going to the customer. Yes, come on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No one told him. I didn't tell him to go. I was like, "You did what?" And hey, good for you, man. J.C.?
We completed a very successful dash in the dark in like ten years here. It's the first time it's rained on us. So I'm certainly grateful for all of the chaperones that came out to make it a reality and for all the support that Coach Buehler has from current and past parents of the program who are really behind the scenes to make that run. So there's a ton, a ton of work that was done. It was a fantastic event. It's one of my favorite premiere events of the year. So it was great to watch that unfold. We got a nice moment of clarity in the middle with no rain, so that was nice to see. We did have some good weather. Tonight was cross-country senior night, so it was great to see them out in the track this, tonight, and have some great weather for their last home cross-country meet. John, I already mentioned homecoming week next year, or next week, sorry. And we're looking forward to that. And the last thing I have for you is, we have some low swim numbers that'll come out into the winter season. So we are exploring what it might look like possibly merging with Notre Dame and Batavia for our swim program. So just wanted to put that on your radars. These things, logistically, we are working with Notre Dame and Batavia to see if it's something that might be feasible. We do have very low numbers. They have low numbers. It's something that's low across the GR, the swim participation. So it's not, we're not an anomaly in that regard. It's something we're exploring. We now will more details to potentially come.
Thanks for all your investigative work, J.C. It's a lot to take on. Rob?
Again, what everyone's saying, school year's off to a great start. I feel like I say every year, there's more tickets this year than last year. It holds true. But between Alex and Jake and I, we're working well to work on tickets each day. One of the minnows we just worked on was related to athletics, is the piece with Parent Square. We always struggled with having mostly Oakfield kids and then a few Elba kids. And the Elba kids would be kind of left out of the loop. If they set up like a texting group or email group or something like that. But the good news is Elba now has Parent Square and Oakfield has Parent Square. The two won't talk to one another, but we can set us up in Elbas and Elba people in ours. And therefore, our coach can just make two postings, copy and paste it from one to the other. So now we have an easier way to include Elba parents and kids and athletes as well in one big mix. So, just today, actually got all the pieces together. There was a lot of logistics to make that happen, but tech director, Ron Kane, over at Elba is fantastic and the two of us figured it out. So, we'll be better poised now for the winter and spring semester, but at least we have the piece, the hard pieces figured out.
It's a heavy lift. So huge thank you to Rob and his tech department.
That's, that's really great. I mean, the easier we can communicate, you know, the better, obviously. And I've never actually thought about that, trying to, to, to coordinate between Elba and Oakfield as far as those communications. Do, do you think other schools work it out the same way, Rob, as far as?
They could, but they, they share students like we do.
Right.
But they are two separate domains. Even Parent Square said, "Oh, well, that's private information. We don't let people cross over." So they said, "Well, what if we make me an employee at Elba and Elba person employee at Oakfield?" And they said, "Well, yeah, that would work." So, we found workarounds to, to make that happen. But it was tricky. We were looking for the all-in-one solution.
Sure.
But if you make a post in one, it's a simple copy and paste into any other platform, so.
That's cool. And it's a, it's a secure way to communicate. It's monitored. It's not the whole, right?
So parents can write back. So it's like, practice has moved to seven-thirty tonight and, you know, it's urgent. You can get the information out quickly. Questions coming back to the coaches can be, you know, slingshotted back and forth and nobody's revealing their personal cell phone number.
Right. That's great. Thanks, thanks, Rob. Katrina, any updates tonight?
No, I mean, kind of the same. We're rolling on. I think we'll get feedback from our change that we did for that first day, open house, meet the teacher, more meet the teachers than open house. I think was a positive across like K to twelve, so that went really well. Our new teachers are rolling in well. There's communication, so pretty good.
Thank you. Mrs. Sizarrano, good evening.
Good evening.
Any updates tonight, Mrs. Sizarrano?
No, I think everybody's happy about coming back to work and seeing the kids and rolling along.
Good, let's keep rolling. Let's keep rolling.
It was a terrific first week.
That's good to hear. Alexis?
Well, I'm sorry. I'm gonna say it again. Homecoming week coming up. It sounds like everybody's super excited. I've been talking to a lot of my friends about it especially. And a few people are super excited about the Powderpuck game that's coming up next week. And all the football guys ready for their homecoming game next.
F I D, I believe, yeah.
I also think that our mom sale did very well. I don't know the exact number, but I talked to a lot of my friends and a few of the parents who were involved with it. And they said that it worked really well. Almost everyone that I talked to, they had at least thirty and above. So it was a huge success for us. And, yeah, just getting ready, hopefully our senior trip goes through, so.
Thanks, Alexis. Another thing for discussion around table tonight, so we're moving on to new business. Be it resolved at items nine point two through nine point four, be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll take it.
Maria's got, can you second it? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, on to winter wrestling program. Be it resolved that the addition of the modified varsity wrestling program be approved as an extracurricular activity sport beginning in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second. Yeah, second, sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. We're alive. Any discussion?
Some of the background context for me and J.C., thank you for everything you're doing so far with the AD position and what you did for this. So for six of us minus Mallory, the, the budget season is still fresh in our minds. And so we went out at the max tax increase as recommended by our leaders here. With also the thought that we're gonna have to draw down on reserves or increase appropriate fund balances. Is that fair to say? It was a, it was a tough budget season. And also, our governor is threatening, was threatening, continues to threaten funding for the schools. In addition to that, the special meeting that we had with Rick Timms, what, what was that defined as? Was that a budget workshop or what was that?
Yeah, that was a budget workshop.
So I think the six of us sat through, you know, that meeting where he exhaustively went through where we are financially as a district, looked at our reserves, looked at future mandates, including the, you know, electric school bus mandate, and made it very clear to us that we are not prepared for what's coming. I think we all walked out of that meeting not feeling great about where we were. It was part of the reason why I think we all agreed to do the max tax increase that we recommended to the community. That got approved, of course, but the, the, the budget vote was a close one. It was probably the closest one, you know, since I've been on the school board. So, I think a lot of this is still fresh in our minds and so the support isn't enthusiastic for new programs right now, I think because of that.
I, I would think there's addition to that as well. I think coming off of COVID and us also exhausting our ARPA funds, Christine presented to us at our last meeting that if we would like to do summer school program again, we have to generate, I think the number was between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. So that is another thing that we have to be extraordinarily cognizant of. And I think Jackie makes a pretty good point in looking at some of our other programs, from our music department to our other clubs and our athletic programs. Are they fully supported? Are they fully funded to the best of our abilities with what we currently have? It was hard to go out at where we went. And then to go out at where we went to increase the taxes and then to spend money on something that we originally didn't budget for, I'm struggling with. And I, I applaud Jordan's effort as a volunteer club advisor this past year. It's a lot of hours. It's a lot of work. I won't say that I compare any of the stuff that I've done as coaching to the level of what he has done. It's not easy. I think, Maria, you've coached a substantial amount in your life. Matt, you are continuing to coach. I coached, Pete's coached. I think we've all coached and I've never gotten paid to do it. And I'm not saying that we can't pay Jordan to do it. But right now is a really tough time for us to continue to add on. Nine thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot, and we're about to approve a surplus that's going to go into some different funds tonight possibly. And it seems as if it should cover that. But moving forward, with the information that we've been given, I'm going to have a very difficult time approving this, uh, tonight.
Yeah, I think it's more of a score responsibility. You know, we're out here because we wanna do great things for the kids. And we also have responsibility in community for tax dollars and stuff. It's hard to say we're raising your taxes as much as we possibly can and then come back to, oh, yeah, we're adding this expense. And yes, it has seen a small number in overall scheme, but it's also just the presence of that's maybe do something else and, you know, for me, additional spending for the year is often a data, like, it's just not, because I think it's around.
I don't think anyone's questioning the value of this program. I think that the data that you've provided, the individualized data specific to Oakfield and, and the students that you've connected with, I think it speaks for itself. Like, there's value. It's, it's, it's bottom line. You know, we all have our own budget to maintain in our homes. And we're tasked with being physically responsible for the district as well. And, and just like in our homes, if there might be something, you know, we really, really want, but it's just not going to be money to do it. And unfortunately, coming into this budget season, I think that there's gonna be more of that than there has been in the past. There's gonna be a lot of times over the last three years that we really didn't think too long and hard about things. And, and the money was there. And it was very simple, right? The money's there. Yes, we can do that. The money's not there.
Well, and, and the other thing, it's looming as well. So, we had a payment due September first from Plug Power. Now, we didn't receive it. It's pending. And they said we will receive it, but we don't have it. Can you remind me what that payment was, Christine?
It's about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So that's a little bit of money there. So, we've been talking about this for a long time, that we're concerned about not getting that payment. They didn't hear. Will it be here? Let's hope so. Because if it isn't, there's gonna be a lot more things that we're going to have to start saying no to. This is a function in which this board has not voted on in this way since I've been here. So, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion does not pass. On to reserve funding. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Oakfield Alabama School District, based on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, recommend the funding of the following reserve funds previously established by the district from unappropriated fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This resolution is effective retroactively to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Can I, or is there any discussion?
Does this have to go through each month? Like, we can hold off for a month or a month?
We have to, the financial statements have to be prepared. The entries have to be made. Financial statements are due to the state on October fifteenth. So preparation of that. I, if I gathered based on the questions that we received, the concerns were where we were putting those funds in a, partially in the debt reserve and partially in the teacher retirement system reserve. Right now, those are the only two reserves that we have available to fund with that excess fund balance. We are fortunate, though, that we have the ERS reserve, which is funded with seven years' worth of, of our ERS annual invoice amount. So that is considered fully funded. And our unemployment reserve is sitting at four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And we don't have unemployment expenses here at the district. Very, very rare does that ever happen. That is a liquid reserve and so our ERS reserve is pretty liquid. So if we're concerned about if, say, we lose a revenue source of, of some sort this year, we would be able to access those two reserves very easily. So it's from a liquid liquidity perspective, we're still okay there. I will be recommending after, you know, we get through this fall and sometime between now and June thirtieth of next year, the creation of a works comp reserve that we do not have established at this point in time. That would also establish another reserve that is similar to the, the ERS and TRS, Reserve Employee Retirement System, as well as the Unemployment one, that is similar in liquidity. It's, it's easily accessible through board action during the year. So, or through budget. So, I would recommend establishing another liquid, liquid reserve that will help in future years for things like that.
There is room right now for running Pogal in the retirement fund range room.
The ERS reserve?
Yes.
Where, so the, the Teacher Retirement System reserve is only, you're only allowed to put a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in there. The reason is, is it goes up two percent of the prior year's teacher reportable earnings, okay? And you can only fund that reserve over the course of time, interest and everything included, up to ten percent of that prior year's ERS report, TRS reportable earnings. So, I can only this year put into that a hundred and fifty-three thousand. I, are, given the only other reserves that we could fund would be the Employee Retirement System, which is seven years- employee retirement system, which is seven years is, would be considered fully funded. The year, the unemployment reserve is considered overfunded. So that would be a reserve like next year that I probably would recommend that we, we talk about pulling that back in and shifting some of our reserves around.
So I think just my reservation right now is not having an actual check in our hand is that this money in the reserve that we can't get back out of. Understand the reason for putting it in for the capital project long term and whatnot, but it's like there you have some funds that pretty much almost match what we're waiting on. You know, if we had the check in our hand today, we could say that it's no problem.
Yeah, the latest, the latest we received, and I put that on my behalf, is that they-
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. Like Christine said, there are two reserves that are, um, you know, and I, and I'll talk to the board later that are accessible if, if the money is needed, is needed there. Like Christine said, we can only fund the one, the two percent, which is a hundred and fifty-three thousand. It's still a very good investment, even though it kind of locks that money in, which I think is your concern, you know, that five hundred thousand dollars into the, to the capital reserve. Keep in mind that in five years, it will be our turn to do another capital project. It is a good investment just because if we fund it like we are for the next five years, you're talking, you're going to have, you know, two point five million in there, which then again means you can probably do twenty, twenty-two million dollars worth of work, you know, in our buildings and on our campus. But I get the point. The concern is I want to be able to access that money if things go south. The other reserves we have-
Support.
That we have, we have support that would only need just board action to, to transfer some of that if that's the case. But I get your point.
Right, to me it feels like we're using a credit card to find the-
I think it's just, I look at it as different pockets.
It is. It's just when you can't get it back out of, then the other pocket's going to have to go down because you can't take it out.
But you can, but you can use a-
It's a shell game.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
So there could be other discussion, but I, I bet Pete that we could approve this subject to the receipt of the Plug Power money. And if by October tenth, we have not received the Plug Power money, we can have a special board meeting to have another discussion about what we want to do. So I think we can still achieve what you're asking to achieve is let's make sure we deposit this check before we move this money. And we can, we can talk about that when we advance. Christine, so talk about the ramifications to us if we go above the four percent, if we maintain higher than four percent fund balance and just, um,
Well-
Say consequences, we'll take them.
Correct. So, so the four percent is mandated under section thirteen eighteen of the real property tax law. So you're only allowed to have four percent fund balance, um, um, unappropriated fund balance at the end of the school, at the end of the fiscal year. It will be noted on our financial statements that gets sent to the state. The other concern I have with that is we are going out to ban for our new capital proj, for this existing capital project and, you know, making sure that we are compliant with real property tax law. Our financial statements have, um, you know, are in good condition, showing that we are re, um, replenishing a reserve that we, we drew down to basically ninety thousand dollars, which is in our, our capital reserve right now. It shows that fiscal stability. There is a fiscal stress monitoring tool that the state does that they plug in all of these numbers and where things are funded at the end of the year. I, I would hate to have that also have a, an impact on our, our ability to bond our bank and the interest rates that we get going forward. So, um, because that's the stuff that they, they, they ask for when we do put that out is our financial statements. The other issue with real property tax law is, you know, we just went out for a tax increase last year. If you leave, you can't leave it in fund balance because anything in above that you're supposed to put aside to, um, to refund to the taxpayers. But you guys adopted a reserve plan last year that says this is what we would do with our fund balance and what the plans are and what we want, how we want to fund things. And, you know, planning for future capital projects and that stability so that we don't have a local share impacting our taxpayers when we go to do a capital project. It keeps that, that tax, um, impact of the projects level over the year. So, you know, all of a sudden one day, if you don't do that and you don't have that, you know, you could have a local impact when you have a project that you have to get done and, you know, your voters could vote it down if there's a tax impact on it. So, you know, keeping that consistency, keeping that stability, um, funding our reserves appropriately as planned is, is, um, all pieces of a, of a bigger long-term financial strategy for us as a district for our stability.
I think there's some unintended consequences, and I've said this here before, of the tax cap legislation while it, you know, was well-meaning. It creates, one, this notion that money is on the table and if the tax cap number that we can go to in a particular year is one percent or two percent or three percent, and if we don't go out to that max, then we have left money on the table, which, you know, our taxpayers have to put that, that money on the table. So that cliche is one that, you know, bothers me. Um, and then two, it, it creates the calculations that you would need to do to manage that tax cap number-
Crazy, you've seen that.
Going negative, um, which, which we have been negative, you know, here, you know, in the past and you're showing it up on your slides. It's, it's not perfect law regulation and, um, there are some, there's some bad things that come out of that. Those are two of them right there. I think this one caused my surprise a bit as a board, right? Um, I think we thought we were hurting a little more than this.
Well, we talked about that the other day, how, how that came about. And, you know, this would have been much, much worse, our fund balance, um, had we not prepaid. You know, we chose this year not to prepay our, our health insurance bill, which was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which freed that out of, out of our non-spendable fund balance. One of the other things that we, we did this year because of the ARPA money for the after-school program wasn't, um, running at a level that would fully expend that money and of course we didn't want to leave that on the table. So we, um, applied for an amendment to the grant that it was able to pull in prior years, um, after-school, um, the extracurricular club, um, stipends that we had paid. We were able to pull that back in and that freed up some money in the general fund as well. So we, you know, my, my spring analysis of what I thought we were going to be able to, to have for fund balance, we, we had more money. So if you add that one fifty and the two eighty, that's about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that, um, you know, really made this larger than, than I anticipated. If you take that four, four thirty out of the, you know, the seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, so about seven hundred and thirty thousand, we would have been at about a three hundred thousand dollar, um, when in prior years, the last few years, we've been at about a million. So that, that is, keeps me, makes me quite anxious when you look at a three hundred thousand dollar surplus on a twenty-five million dollar budget, um, that's cutting it, to me, too close to comfort. It's a one, less than a one percent.
Are we able to apply any of this money to that health insurance payment that we pushed off?
I said that we pushed it off. It's in, in, in a year where we have excess fund balance, I believe they chose, knew they were going to have fund, excess fund balance, they chose to make that payment and it kind of locks it up in a, in a non-spendable format. It's not anything that we're doing, we don't need to, we didn't put anything off. It was, it was the July payment. We didn't make it prior to July first. It was just an accounting. It's still, it was made. It was just made July first instead of June. It's correct. Correct, correct. And so in a, in a year where you don't, do find yourself with that excess fund balance, that is an option for you. Do we have to kind of know that ahead of time that that's where you're going to end up? So, you know, you try and make sure that you stay back or under that four percent in your unappropriated fund balance. And that's also a, you know, fund balance kind of set aside tool, beside resources.
Okay, out of prudence, um, and upon receipt, yeah.
Any other discussions?
I think, I think we, I think we get it here, right?
Yeah, Maria will lead the, Maria made the motion, so she'll need to amend it.
Yep, I'll amend that motion.
Okay, amended, you'd like to make a motion that, or be it resolved that upon receipt of our Plug Power payment, that we will.
So just amend that motion that, uh, subject to receipt of the Plug Power revenue.
Motion is approved per-
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm struggling with my English right now.
Yeah, just that whole resolution, resolution would be approved pending the receipt of the Plug Power ECA and pilot payments.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
And once we receive those, I can notify you and-
And then if we, so then here's the other thing too. So Christine, this has got to go out by October fifteenth, is your, is your saying?
So our, yes, our audited financial statements are due to the state October fifteenth, so-
Is, is, is that, obviously it's got to be filed electronically so we can just push-
And the auditors need time to prepare the final report.
Okay, so what's the drop dead date? So what's the date that we're waiting like for Plug Power, say? So that gives you a window of time that's not going to be too-
Fifteenth is Tuesday. So they have, they will prepare them to present by October fifteenth and they have to be uploaded. So let me hang on. I'm looking at the calendar at this point. So we were told this check was being cut this week. Next week would be weekending the twenty-seventh, uh, if we don't have it the twenty-seventh. I would have to ask the auditors the drop dead date for the decision on what, what reserve we-
Cause then we'd have to do a special meeting, right?
What reserve we fund. And I can, I can look into other options as well and, and talk to them about, yeah.
Well, just as long, you just don't, I don't want to give you a tiny window.
I, I don't know without asking them.
Okay.
Like I said, I don't think we're going to get there from my last communication, but-
Okay.
We'll, I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it if, if for some reason by the middle or end of next week, we still haven't received the check.
Okay, all right.
I'll let you know.
So-
So you go on that. I'll second that amended motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Uh, thanks for working that out, guys. I, I appreciate that. Where are we? Communications. Uh, Carly, do we have any communications tonight? Thank you. Uh, on the personnel cons, agenda, be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point five be approved by cons, agenda. Can I get a motion? Uh, can I get a second? Thank you. Jackie? Thank you, Jackie. Maria, good.
I'm sorry, just-
I don't know what's going on. It's like an auction here. I think Maria got it.
You were second. Who was her?
Matt.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
My family voice.
Eleven six, um, eleven point six, be it resolved that Kelsey Bush be appointed to a twelve-month probationary appointment of personal healthcare aid effective August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh, can I get a second? Thanks, Pete. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven seven, resignation. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of Catherine Davis effectively July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven eight, uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of Kim Schildwasser, varsity swim coach. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd just like to say thank you to Kim for the years of service on the swim, uh, as a, as a swim coach and I, we, we appreciate, um, her advanced, uh, notification that she is not going to be fulfilling, uh, fulfilling the position this year. So, uh, thank you and, and good luck, Kim. Eleven nine, uh, be it resolved the Board of Education accepts the resignation of John Williams, special education teacher effective October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, we wish John Williams the best of luck and thank him for his years of service at Oldfield. Retirement, uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Roger Bolton effective March seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Thanks, Pete. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Opposing remarks? Pete?
I don't know if this is one of our tougher board meetings of, uh, heads of the board since they've been on the board, but, uh, it's also good to see kids in good school and, uh, sports going on and everything else. Just because we're kind of having to make tough decisions doesn't mean that this all can't be good. Make the best of what we have, right? We'll get through these times and we'll be better and stronger on the other side and, um, have the kids back in school and seeing everybody.
Thanks, Pete. Now?
Um, yes, tough, tough meeting tonight. Wow, we had to be some navigators of challenges tonight and that was very difficult, I think for all of us. I could feel my heart rate going up, um, through this whole meeting. But on a good note, I cannot say enough good about our campus and we look like rock stars at Dash in the Dark. I love the lights. You ladies held up and were directing people to cross and, uh, it was so invigorating to see that much activity in our campus and I felt like we were like big shots. Like we were a university or something. It was, it was really neat to see how everybody came together building into grounds and, um, just wow. It was exciting. And then to see everything else getting off. We have dates for all the music. We have dates for all the upcoming events and I think this year it's going to be a really exciting year with talent shows and, um, just showing off our kids in such a, uh, great light. So, um, exciting for those seniors. Make this a really good year upcoming, um, and, and write a nice path for yourself. So good luck for this year and, um, I look forward to October when we're into more pumpkin and fall weather.
Thanks, Mallory.
Yep.
Mallory?
Oh, switching it up.
I do every time. It's dealer's choice with me.
With actual sentiments, um, definitely challenging me, but appreciate everybody's, you know, um, this open, transparent conversation. I think there's good discussion and, um, certainly have, um, all of the kids best interests in mind in navigating challenges to echo, um, Mallory's sentiments. Um, no, I think it's just been a great start to the school year. Um, Benjamin family rolled in like the first day of school. So thank you all for your patience. We've been never going to start it, but we definitely did. John got some, uh, personally escorted, Eli and he couldn't get out of the car, so.
Give him more smiles in the hallway.
So he's doing great, but the first day was just a little rough. Um, no, thank you to everyone. I know it's been just, you know, a lot of getting ready and, uh, anticipation and I know it's a lot to get the first few weeks of school off, so appreciate all everyone, you know, staff-wise is doing to make it comfortable for the kids and, um, getting into the new swing of things. So we all are, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mallory.
I know.
Maria, go ahead.
Do my best. A lot of what, what has been said, I will not repeat what has been said, but I, I concur. The supply drop-off day in Oldsyc House, that was amazing. That was great. The buildings were humming and it was very easy to navigate your way through. Um, the teachers were wonderful. They were warm. They were welcoming. The elementary school smelled of fresh popcorn. It was like a carnival. Um, that was a lot of fun. Um, and the campus was beautiful. So hats off to our building and grounds crew as well, um, because outside and inside looked absolutely phenomenal. You know, it's our first board meeting of, of the instructional school year, so just want to say thank you to everyone. And, you know, Deb, it's so wonderful to hear, like, it's been a great week. Like, we're ready to go. Everyone's happy to be back. Like that energy and that passion and that drive is just incredible, especially after what can sometimes be most challenging of the school year as we all know. So I hope everyone, you know, looks to your energy and positive outlook and you can carry that throughout the school year because it's truly going to, you know, make a difference this year as well. So thank you to everybody and let's go.
Thanks. Yeah, Jackie?
Um, yeah, I mean, listening to everybody here, it's been a smooth transition, like, repeatedly and everybody's great start to the year. It's, it's wonderful to hear and also scary. I don't know, like, that kinda makes me nervous, but it's awesome. Because we haven't sat up here and had a lot of beginnings of school years after a lot of the heavy stuff. But we hear that repeatedly, you know, there's, so it's really, really refreshing and it's nice and I know that, um, people putting in hard work is what makes it happen. So every day, then the kids show up and I got a fifth grader and a ninth grader who's in the link crew and she loves it. She has said more and more positive things about that, so you guys have done a great job and I just love the concept, Tracy P. to a great job of getting leaders, young leaders to become leaders and training more leaders. I just, I just think it's great by action, so, um, great start to the year for my household so far and glad for structure and let's continue.
Thanks, Jackie. Matt?
We're off to a great start also. Um, I was gonna speak to the building crew presentation as well, I also have a freshman in, uh, in our household and, uh, so we've, we've heard about it through the years, but, you know, my first opportunity to personally experience it and, and it is a wonderful experience for her, uh, so, so she's talked about it a couple of times and then you can also see the growth opportunities for the upperclassmen that are given to lead that program. So you can see where there's a lot of merits, a great program. Thank you to Tracy P. for doing that. And on the PTO and, you know, Pete mentioned, you know, his thank you to Tina, um, you know, with her time, um, my wife serves, you know, a much smaller role than, uh, what Tina does, but she shows me some of the communications and I see the time that she spends, you know, with that. So, um, you know, thank you to Tina and her crew and everybody that volunteers for that. Um, hopefully, you know, all of the, you know, as, as we, we talked about the two different buildings, hopefully, everybody feels supported by that organization. I know that's their hope and it's, it's a lot of work, you know, to pull together dollars to do the things they do for these buildings to support the teachers and all the, you know, all the rest of the staff, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Matt. Um, hopefully, you've made it through the first few weeks successfully. I know it's a real challenge to get that new list or your homeroom or what your different classes look like because it's pretty unknown. Um, I think, uh, it's an aver- cre- increasing reality where we're getting students from different school districts that we just don't know and all of the baggage that comes with those students, it's a lot. And, uh, I myself this year felt overwhelmed in a couple of situations where it's, you just can't believe how this child got here and their story that came with them, it just doesn't even seem real. And I know that's happening in our classes right now, but you're providing them with a great experience and that want to come back and feel that love the next day. My three kids, I, like I, I said to my dad the other, I said, Dad, why didn't we wanna go to school? To start off, and he said, well, Justin, I was neurotic and you took that on. And I said, well, the, the, the idea is, is that, my dad was a good dad, but, uh, and, 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 and I love to be at my house, but my kids also love to be at our house, but they really love being here. Just, uh, like, I'm, I'm not just saying that, so I really appreciate the love that they've gotten down at the elementary and at the middle and wherever that they've gone, I just really appreciate it and I, I, I just thank you because the, the beginning is, is, it's grueling, it's so sucking the first couple of days. You think, how can I do a hundred and eighty more of these days? And like, I was waving the first day when they got on the buses as if it was the last day of school. I was so excited just to know that I, I had made it, it was like taking to my knees, uh, the, in the afternoon, but I, it's hard. Uh, and so thank you to administration, uh, that provides guidance, um, and just sometimes a reprieve. Uh, cause boy, I need it sometimes for an administrator to walk into my room and say, this is, you're right, Justin, this is inappropriate behavior by the kids, not me. Uh, so I just, I, I thank you all, uh, for what you're throwing into this, uh, cause at the end, it's, it's to, to build these ladies down here uh, as leaders. We're in desperate need of them today. And, well, ju- this one, yeah, you guys, I don't know, that was an errant finger there, that lady down there. So thank you, uh, a great deal. Um, that being said, I'd like to enter into executive, uh, session, let me get this right, uh, to discuss, uh, for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a certain employee and the evaluation and contract negotiations of and with the superintendent at eight fifteen. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I gotta go.